Rec convening the meeting at 6:38. Close session, I'm gonna take local again. I am present. Vice President.
Here.
Jorge Lanzares.
Here.
Juan Sanchez is absent today. Pete Pryor.
Present.
Laura Bernal. And Laura Lopez. Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open up for public comments. It's very open in the public and I'd like to address the board.
I'd like to press.
And then I have, there's some forms out there, if I can get those forms, please. Okay, I have Claudia, Claudia Guzman.
On? Yeah. Okay. This meeting is being recorded, so everyone is aware that the meeting is being recorded. If members of the public want a copy of the recorded meeting, there is a charge of eighty-five dollars per hour for the IT person to click it, and any cost for the device, so you provide a device, so eighty-five per hour for the IT person. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, my name is Claudia, Claudia Guzman, and I have two kids here. One is in first grade and another one in... No, it was not. Okay. I have two kids here, one is in first grade and another one is in fifth grade, and I wanted just to give a message to Juan Sanchez, to thank him, I know he's not here, but I know he will hear this later, and I want him to know that, especially for my fifth grader, we had a really hard time finding a school that was a good fit for him, and then we heard about Oasis, and we started coming to the meetings, we started driving around. Since he has been here, and I know, I talked to a few teachers about him, they would never know that my son had extreme anxiety, to the point where I would have to change, get, send him with a change of clothes to the school that he was going to, biting his nails. We were very close to giving him medication, but the right medication was here at Oasis. He's very happy, and when he's here, and I pick him up after work, he said, "Don't, wait until six, what are you doing here?" So I just want Juan to know that this is part of the work he has done all these years, and I wanna thank him for his, the service that he has done with no pay, but his pay would be that, at least two kids, I know there's more, but my two kids are very happy in this school. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll make sure he gets that message. May I call Diana Beltran?
Hello.
Hello.
We got a little... Whatever. Or just wire says. Yes. Well, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Diana Beltran, and I actually attended here when it first opened back in...
We remember.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while, but I really wanted to share a little bit of my experience, because as I was mentioning earlier to someone, really Oasis has been probably, I mean, it has been the best educational experience of my life, and I still go back to it even now. I'm in San Jose State University now, and you know, through my bios and my ratings, and I always mention, you know, Oasis really has made me open up, and before that, I used to go to a different elementary school, and believe me, I was very shy, I mean, I still can be, but Oasis really helped me open up, open up, and, oh, there you go, it really helped me open up, and I met a lot of great teachers, and just the perspective of, or having a different perspective of how things were taught, just made me realize that I feel like that I need more of this school.
One minute.
One minute, oh, okay. I was not aware, so. But really, I think that having the opportunity to come here is like an honor, and I'm so happy to know that it's come this far, and a lot of great kids and teachers are still here, and I've always said to my cousin, like she, her kids are growing up and she's looking for school, and I told her this is a great school, and she's really willing to come here and check it out, so I think Oasis really done a great job up until. Thank you.
Thank you. Judy Blonsky, I hope I said that correctly.
Good evening. I write so that... Testing, one, two, three. I wanna thank you for hearing all of us this evening, because it takes a lot to get me out at night, but I believe so strongly in this school, not since my own children were in school, and I'm grandma now, how I see the school, so dedicated, with such well-trained teachers, and children so happy to be here, so let me start at the beginning, I don't wanna miss anything. We're all here tonight because we believe in children, we love them, we wanna see them get the very best educational experience they can at their young age, these are our future citizens. Two years ago, I had the opportunity to, when we first moved to Salinas, to volunteer, to substitute in different elementary schools around here, and I substituted in most of them, and it was not always a bad experience, but it wasn't always such a good experience, and at the point, at the end of my first year, I wasn't sure I wanted to go back. But I had heard the best things about Oasis from other teachers and other substitutes and people who were attending worship, and they said, "You really ought to check it out." Okay, thank you, and it sounded to me like Oasis was a beacon of light in the educational community, so I called, made an appointment, and came on over, and when I walked in, I saw these wonderfully bright faces and eyes and smiles and lots of questions from students, "Who are you, are you a teacher?", and then I talked with faculty, and they seemed so dedicated and answered my questions, and I thought, "I really want to be here." So a year later, I was aiding, and then this year, I'm reading support, I couldn't love it more, and as a teacher, I've been very well supported, but I really wanna say these words, "You all, as our Board of Directors and the very special administration and faculty and staff of Oasis, provide the best holistic, I consider it very holistic and individual approach to education of our future citizens than I've ever witnessed anywhere else," and that's saying a lot, "I've taught at the college level all the way across the country. I don't know that education can get any better than this," and so I'm very grateful to you all, and a special shout-out to Mr. Sanchez, who after twelve long years and a lot of hard work and dedication, is now going to be retiring, so thank you.
Thank you, very much. Any other comments from the public?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Wes Wise, Salinas resident, community enthusiast, retired teacher, substitute. The IT thing with eighty-five dollars an hour, I think it should just be made public, it should be free, it should be available to your entire school district, your teachers and students, and the parents that can make this, that might have an interest or something, I think it should be made available free, no, no charge, please.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Thank you. Camila Cuadrius.
Hi. I was a student here at Oasis, and I just wanted to say that I absolutely loved this school, it really helped me bring out, like, the best in me, the basketball program here really helped me enjoy basketball, because basketball is my passion, and because of Oasis that helped me see that basketball was what I wanted to do, and I was inspired by many teachers, especially Mr. Mike, he's one of the best teachers I had. I remember, I have so many memories, like, when we almost had to call locksmith, 'cause me and my friends' fault, after Boxland, but because Boxland, that helped me realize what a real business is like and how it's supposed to run, how it's like to work with others and be involved in a family. I would always be in, like, the talent shows or perform, and it was so much fun, especially meeting all my friends, which I still have contact with, and I just absolutely loved this school. That's it.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Other comments? Okay, thank you everyone for your comments. Let's move on to item three, closed session, we had a conference call with the legal council, and there's nothing to report. Moving on to adoption of the agenda, everyone had a minute to look over the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? additions?
The agenda, I posted it under, let's see, in the description, that's nine point, let's see, nine point, under announcements, is winter break is, I put 2017, it should be 2018, so only the minor correction, the whole, what we're not going backwards.
Thank you.
So, December 16th, 2017, through January 8th, 2018, so that correction is correct in your version, but I have one that was posted.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda with that minor correction? Move, take a second.
One second.
If it's seconded, I was in favor, if the agenda is corrected.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I believe we don't have a minute up yet, so can I get a motion to postpone those for the next meeting? Okay, move it seconded, right here, all the, all the in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes, thank you. Let's go to Business Services and Presentations, our first is our Oasis Community Council, an update from OCC President Capes. Ms. Garcia.
Cap, please. Ms. Garcia. Makes me feel old. So, I have a couple of things for OCC to report, we had an alignment meeting, and OCC was asked to do a needs assessment for lunch, to be presented in sixty days, and we decided sixty days would count after the break, and so we're gonna get a couple of parents from OCC, and Augustine said he wanted to help to kind of do a needs assessment versus if, you know, kind of like what the people want, like, if a lunch thing would be good, maybe a snack thing, to kind of get feedback off of that. And also, at that alignment meeting, we were asked to come up with incentives to motivate families and more participation, some ideas were either raffle off a row at the gala, or a table at Harvest Feast, or to have lunch with the youth in president. And then our next coffee mingle is on the 10th of January, and then our next OCC meeting is on the 9th of January, and that's all I have. Any questions, anybody?
Do you still want us to go to your meetings?
If you'd like to come to my meetings, you are welcomed. And then, can I just say something about our meetings really fast? So our meetings are held publicly with their non-public meetings, so it's only Oasis parents and families that can attend our meetings, I just wanna make that very clear. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Let's see, we're gonna get a report from our English Language Development Program, from Mona, starting, starting? Starting, thank you.
Good evening, I'm gonna give you a brief overview of our ELD program for this fall. At present, we have eighty English language learners who are being served at Oasis School, their grade levels are as follows. Twenty-two in kindergarten, twenty-four at first grade, ten at second, four at third grade, ten at fourth, nine at fifth, and one at sixth. In staffing, I'm teaching ELD to a total of forty-five students at present, from kindergarten and first grade plus one second grader. Diego Quintero is teaching a total of twenty-five students ELD in grades two through five. Rosara has five ELL students working with her on the Read Naturally program, and Chanel, our special education teacher, has five ELL students who have IDPs and work with her for their ELD program. The setting for these students is small group, in all cases, in pull-out programs. Each group meets four days per week for twenty-five to thirty minutes each day. The curriculum that Diego and I use are the ELD standards and each grade level's scope and sequence when we're planning lessons. For the curriculum, we use the Reach for Reading Language Arts program adopted by Oasis in addition to many other materials. These include a picture library, Realia, music, books, and online subscription services such as Readworks, Nusela, and Reading A to Z. Do you have any questions for me? Yes, Mike.
How's it go? How are we doing?
It's doing great, the kids love coming. Last week, I was in meetings all week, I pushed in to every classroom on Monday to see how the ELL students were functioning in their classrooms with their peers and with their teacher and the curriculum, and then on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, I met with each teacher for an hour, Diego was also there with the teachers, who students he works with, Lucy was there, and Elizabeth, and we talked about how it went, and we also talked about each of the English language learners that we share, and so I didn't see them at all last week, and it was great to get back to teaching again this week, and they were all excited about coming back too. I'm seeing great progress, it's very exciting, when the light bulb goes on, they're eager to come to class, and they go home and share what they learned with their families.
People, since it's being recorded, can you tell us what the acronym ELD stands for?
English Language Development.
Thank you.
So I have a question for you, so on average, how, how long do the students go through the program? So at what point do they get? They're exited out of the special pull-out services that they receive? I mean, on average, I'm not asking for you.
I can't say an average, because it depends on individual students, and we really do look at each student, we look not only at the CELT score, if you want the acronym for that, just wait just a moment here. California English Language Development Test, which is on its last leg now, it's going to be replaced by LPAC, which is the English Language Proficiency Assessment for California, and that will begin February 1st. So, we looked at, we look at those test results, which include speaking, listening, reading, and writing. We also look at how they're doing in their pull-out program, because we do assessments as well, we look at how they're doing in their classroom with the, in relation to their peers, if they're at grade level or not, because we don't wanna reclassify them and have them not survive, we wanna make sure they are ready to be reclassified before we do that.
Okay, but the goal is probably in six months, there's gonna be some improvement, hopefully within the year, so is the goal that they're gonna be at some grade level?
Usually doesn't go quite that fast. Yeah. Yes.
So, Mona, I can assist you with anything?
Thank you.
It's on.
Okay, so, when a student starts receiving ELD services in kindergarten, if they start with us in kindergarten, by third grade, most, not all, children are reclassified, then we have the obligation to follow up and track their progress for the next two years, to see how they're doing. You cannot go back and reclassify them as English language learners anymore, but if they are falling behind, then you have to provide additional support services to make sure that for the next two years, they stay at grade level and remain on track to reaching the language arts, English language arts standards. So, the answer to that would be an average of three years, if they start with us, but if we have a student, for instance, come in in third grade, usually, they might be reclassified by sixth grade, sometimes they don't, they leave to middle school as an English language learner, but the hope and goal is, before they leave Oasis, if they start with us when they're middle, in kindergarten, first grade, then they'll be reclassified with at least two years of follow-up, so that they have all the documentation and evidence to be able to be successful in a traditional, regular, mainstream classroom somewhere else. So that would be the answer, an average of three years, on average.
And then, on average, do you have, 'cause that's like a, that's a thirty, thirty percent?
Or...
Right, roughly?
Fifty? Yeah. But, so it's a thirty percent...
Roughly thirty percent. Is that, so you're, you have those that graduate in sixth grade, and do you get another set of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, those who leave sixth grade, and then with the kindergartners to replace it.
Okay, on the average, it's the same, about thirty percent?
We've been having, I think, more over the years.
Over the years, what happened is that our English language population has increased throughout the years, especially because we had, we were heavy with kinders and first and second graders, so that's when they come in, and we had a handful of them when we moved to this facility, and throughout the years, that number has significantly increased, I believe last year was ninety-nine, around that number, but it's been under a hundred, but over eighty. So those students who exited in sixth grade are replaced by kindergartners who are coming in in kindergarten or first grade.
Okay, thank you, those, that was it. Any other questions for the board?
Nope. Mike? From Mike. You mentioned that you were expecting the CELT test to up the number of ELD kids, did that come in?
The CELT test?
Did the numbers increase?
I don't remember.
What number of CELT? I'm unclear on your question.
At the last, at the last meeting, Lucy, you mentioned that they were waiting on CELT test results, and that might be more kids coming into the ELL program.
The CELT test results haven't come in yet, for the, for the kindergartners, we send those off to state, and we ask for another pickup, we requested another pickup on Monday, so those are going out, went out, and there's another batch going out, so as soon as we get them back in, that number of eighty, the eighty number may go up.
Yeah, but there's still some results that haven't come in.
There's still, yeah, some results have not come in yet.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you for your presentation. We now have a special education program presentation from Chanel Flores.
Hello.
Hello.
Okay, so, I'm the RSP, which is Resource Specialist Program, I run that, and then I also coordinate for special ed. So a total number of students were sped this year is twenty-one, and then two are pending, what pending means is that we're doing either full assessment, which is academic, or, and combined with the ed side, or it's speech only. Two of my students are first graders, one is a second grader, one is a third grader, one is a fourth grader, and one is a fifth grader, and I also have one sixth grader, and that's a total of seven RSP students, and I see them for either math or reading services, depending on the student, depending on their goal, and then I also do the caseloads for fifteen speech students, that are seen for vocabulary syntax, articulation, expressive or receptive language. Per week, RSP serves one thousand three hundred and twenty minutes weekly for all the seven students, and then speech has five hundred and five minutes weekly for all fifteen students. So speech and RSP is mainly provided outside of general ed, but has the option to go into classrooms on their IDPs, so if any teachers come to me or to Maureen, which is the speech pathologist, and request for additional support in the classroom, we do have that flexibility to go and support them in the classroom depending on what they're working on and if that's towards their goal or not. And then we do one-on-one direct instruction, I am capable of doing one-on-one right now 'cause my, I have seven, and they're so, they're from first to sixth graders, so I can't put them in small groups, and then she does more small groups, there are a few that are one-to-one. We just, I just had my annual review by the state for my state's errors, which is our online database program for IDPs, and I have no errors, and so it gets shut down for a week, and we're not able to go online and update any IDPs or change anything, and they see if every document is legally done, if the dates are corrected, everything's correct, then they, if they aren't, they come back to us, or to me, and tell me what I need to alter or make, not mistakes anymore. And so, this year I did not have any, and last year I did not have any. For the curriculum, I have a lot that I choose from, I have these books on, on, on display, because I choose, I pull from different programs depending on the student's needs, so it's reading K through six for Shell Education, differentiated reading for K through six, Lexia Learning, which is our computer-based learning, that I, I don't personally use in the classroom, but I allow the students to take this home over winter break, for example, that they're gone for a long period of time, and they're able to do this on any type of device, and it's, and I retest them so that they're able to start at the level that they left this last week, so they're able to do that over break, 'cause we have a lot of regressing with my students, so I try to make sure that they keep up. And then the Woodcarp Johnson, which is used for our cognitive abilities along with achievement, and then oral language for myself when we give a full assessment or a tri-annual, and then Eureka Math, which is adopted by Oasis, and then Super Teacher worksheets are just another source of pulling out from different worksheets that the kids can do one-on-one with me. Any questions?
Any questions for board? Mike?
Yes, it's, what's your question?
On the, on the, not a handout, but the thing that you gave us, which of these programs do you prefer using? 'Cause what we have here basically seems like a description from the producer of the thing, I guess you usually use words like, phrases like gold standard outcome.
Yeah.
What do you use, what do you like, and what do you see is most effective?
I like using the Shell Education reading K through six, and because it has different levels within the book, and so I test them in the beginning of the year, and then also when we come back from break, and then after summer break, so I retest them to make sure that they're staying up on their goal, and it just depends what their goal is, so if it's reading, I like pulling from this, because it's seeing their art, like, how they're pronouncing each word, if they're echoing me correctly, if I can let them go on their own, and then, so, and then the next one underneath is comprehension, this one has questions, if they're understanding their reading, and if I'm, you know, if it's more focused on comprehension, or we need to focus on something else, but it just depends on the student's goal, on which one I specifically pull from to meet that specific student's goal.
Thank you. Any other questions for board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on flowers.
Okay, let's move on to discussion items. We have as a discussion item, the nominations for secretary and treasurer. I know that in the past, a board member of Quark is, has been the treasurer, so we want to encourage him to continue with that role if he chooses to.
Yeah.
Are you interested? Okay, we won't be approving these positions, we're just asking for their, their interest. And we also have a secretary position. Is there anyone from the board that'd like to be in that position? At least three of you. Pete or?
No, no.
No? No, Pete, we can do you?
No.
No, Dr., can we bend your arm for, I think, on the role? So the role of secretary is just to sign most of the documents that, that are, need to be approved through, through the meetings, pretty much, right? So minutes and if there's a secretary signature that's needed. You sign. Yeah? Yeah? Okay, great, thank you. We'll bring those to action items at the next board meeting. There are two people that are interested. The next is a discussion item on the landscaping architects contract for the new playground. Dr. Peder.
Thank you. Okay, so we reach out to, like I said in my report, to two different entities. And one of them declined due to the workload on their end as well as for timeline. So I reached out back to them and explained to them our timeline is a little bit flexible as far as when we're hoping to have the proposals submitted to the board and approved and for them to reconsider submitting a proposal to us. They do know that we're looking at different proposals. And they have not gotten back to me yet. I just did that last night, so I'm hoping to hear back from them. And I reached out to another company and I haven't heard back from them either. They have done some work for us in the past when this person was working under a different architect and now he's independently, now with his architectural license. So I'm hoping to hear back from him. And if not, I have one more architect that I can reach out to. The biggest challenge is that the architects that we need to contract must be aware and must know about schools. It can't just be any architect. And there's very few in the area. I believe there's a handful of them. And like I said, there is the one that helped us with the original, with this facility. There is these two other companies that I reached out to and this other person who is now an independent architect. So there aren't that many in the area. So that's my biggest challenge, is to get proposals from them so that those can be reviewed and one of those can be chosen so that we can submit our plans to the city of Salinas for approval for our new place structure. So we have one proposal and I didn't have questions for Beth, is her name, it says Beth, but she was called Beth. So Beth, I didn't have any questions for her. She did email me asking for, if I had any updates on the proposal. And I stated that the board was going to hear about this proposal tonight and that the board was going to review all the proposals as well as the contracts committee later on. But this time I didn't have any other, any update for her either way as far as the selected company that is going to help us through the plans. So that's all I have for you. I believe, let's see, I met with, I met with the other company that was here, the, what was it for Mike, Belly?
Oh, yeah, Belly.
Belly, Belly. Belly, Belly Architectural, I met with them. And then Mike was able to meet with BFFs. I wasn't on campus, I was sick that day, so I wasn't able to meet with them. And I'm hoping to reach out to the other ones and meet with them so they can deal with a proposal, submit a proposal for the city of Salinas.
So two, two came for a call for...
Yes.
Proposals, if you may.
Correct.
One has already declined and one has provided us a proposal.
Yes.
And the hope is that at least one more?
The hope is at least one more.
Okay.
At least one more proposal.
Okay.
Yeah. But I'm reaching out to, the next one is Peter Casaman. Peter Casaman is another local architect who we actually have done a lot of work with. He is the one who originally helped us get set up here and get all the permits for all of our construction along with Wayne Gilbeck. So we did have licensed contractors as well as licensed architects helping us with our plans and our proposals to the city, and they were approved. And so I'm hoping to bring them back on board, but I do need other proposals from other companies as well so that we're not only going to the same one for our new contracts policy.
Are there any questions from the board on this proposal?
Well, like she said, I talked to our Beth from BFFs. And for what it's worth, I want to tell the board this, that they have worked with the two companies that we've already started with. And they're currently working on a project, they're working on other projects with them so they have a good communication with them or whatever that might mean.
So this proposal doesn't have a total?
It doesn't have a total, it has...
Yeah, per hour.
Per hour, right? It all depends on the requirements from the city. It can be any amount at this time, we don't know. And the reason being is that when we go to obtain a permit, the city may come back with more and more and more until they are satisfied. And so the architects have to keep on working on, just to give you a good example, when we built Chanel's classroom, it took them over a year just to get everything processed. For the fence, the permit, for the fence and the parking lot, three years, the process. So I'm just giving you an idea because they keep coming back with, I need more, and give me days and provide us with that.
So, but we pay this company for, because they make the changes, they resubmit?
Right.
They make more changes, they resubmit?
And they charge you hourly. Yeah. So there's no final number, there's no way of knowing?
They get three tries.
They get three tries.
Four tries, three tries.
Four tries. No, it doesn't work that way to the city.
Oh, I know. Kidding.
It doesn't work that way.
I mean, but there should be like up to an amount so that we can, I'd hate to approve something that just says whatever the city wants you to spend. I mean, that's...
Well, if the plan is submitted, it's four thousand five hundred. The building purchase submitted is five thousand six hundred. And the structure review is hourly. It just depends on what the city asks.
And then they communicate with the city, we can't communicate with the city.
Oh, yeah, we can communicate with the city.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. We take the plans and say like, come on, review these and tell me within three shots what you're going to do. Because we don't, I mean, we don't have open pockets to, for the city to keep on charging for.
The city has the own fees, these are their professional services fees.
I get it, I get it. I'm just generalizing, like, it shouldn't be an open process for them to...
What happens is that...
So then we got to get architects that know what they're doing and on two pops, like that's all you get.
That's why...
I'm being facetious, but you know what I mean?
Look at item, line one zero four, review, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, one zero four, review agency comments. And with quiet, resubmit plans is required, parentheses, one resubmit is included in our fee, close parentheses, for approval. So everything after the second, like you say, it's, it's on that.
Right. Well, again, it's, it's the city, sometimes they end up bringing other people in.
Yeah. So I guess what I'm asking of the board is that we be on top of it on our end so that we don't spend three, I mean, it's, we're not constructing a castle. It's a structure that's already in place, like, it's already built, right? And it shouldn't, it shouldn't take too long. We're not, we're not changing walls, we're not erect, you know, there's no digging in the ground. I mean, there's like some basic stuff.
Right.
I just would hate for this to, like, you know, keep on signing the checks. Okay. Just, I urge the board to be...
On top of it, stay on top of it. Yeah, so the board administration can stay on top of it, and we can, we do have direct access to the city building and planning department, we need to follow up and ask and be with them.
They have commission meetings, right?
They, so that they stay on top of it.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you, Anita, for the update. Let's go back to six point three, management administrative salary proposal.
Please, I'm going to have to use myself and Lucy, we'll just use ourselves. Can I take this one or you?
Okay. So there's a, there's a, yeah, it's a discussion item. There's a proposal up here on administration salary, and I believe it's a three percent increase. Same that's proposed for our teaching staff and our support staff. And so are there any questions about this proposal?
I thought we negotiated with one of the board and us.
Different, different way of negotiating. We're presenting it to the board here.
Okay.
Yeah. It's just a three percent increase on top of whatever the previous, or the current salary schedule. Any questions? Well, six point four is very similar, so if you want to... Are there any questions of the salary itself?
No.
Right? Years of experience?
Yeah.
The four or three different positions that we have here. And then we have, if you flip the page, there's one for the office manager and one for the administrative assistant as well. So it's the current plus a three percent increase across the board. Okay. No questions? Move on.
Is the teacher salary is the same?
So the, so the next item is six point four is the teachers... It's also a three, well, there's a, yeah, it's a proposed three percent, right? Yeah. There's two of them, there's a proposed three percent and a proposed five percent. Obviously, we're going to have a conversation with, yeah, with Donna, to see long-term projections of what Lucy's doing. It's just a proposed, so you can get a first glance at what this is going to look like, if this is where we go with the three percent. Of course, we're going to base it on where we are, where our budgets are, and where we can do some projections for the future. Yeah, we've talked about this before. Three percent across the board. Let's see, where are we?
Seven.
So it's done with six point four, it's going to administration, and so, oh, get back. I'm not happy about these guys. They're like, they're like I would bug you or something. Okay.
Office time.
So, enrollment and attendance update, please.
Is that, are you, are you going to go over the salary and projections?
We already reviewed them.
Okay.
I just asked the board that they review them, if they have any questions, no questions. We're going to talk to Donna for long-term projections, and then when we bring it back, we'll make a decision.
Sounds good. So we're ready for March. Okay, sounds good. Okay. So the administration, new special report is attached. In enrollment and attendance, seven point one. We, the information is there, so I don't know if you have any questions about that. If you don't, then there's that management recommendation from CalPAS. I was a big, a big...
Can we go back to seven point one?
Oh, yes, yes.
Where are we with, with the Saturday?
Saturday Academy?
Yes. Anyone?
Do you have nothing on the Saturday Academy?
Saturday Academy has been successful. It really helps us. I mean, it, yeah, it makes a difference.
Okay.
It was something great that we...
It has made a big difference. The minimum of students we have had is eighteen and the maximum has been...
Almost fifty.
Almost fifty students.
Okay.
So the next round is after winter break, and Dr. Josue will be helping us. She was doing the NASA program on Saturdays, and now she's going to be helping us run the, one of the sessions for the Saturday Academy.
Okay.
So that's helping us to make them.
We anticipate recovering some of the...
Oh, yeah, we anticipate recovering a significant amount. Actually, the report is due sometime this week, Friday, and mine too is due on Friday. So our reports are due on Friday, and by then we should know how we're recuperating. And moving forward, we anticipate recuperating all of that back.
Okay.
Yes, yes, yes.
Great, thank you.
So seven point two, the management recognition. Our staff, Erica and Suzanne are responsible for the lovely ADA report, is the average daily attendance report. And it's submitted into CalPAS. And CalPAS is the main system that holds all of the student data for every district, for every school in California. So if a student leaves Oasis, it shows where they transfer to, if they come here, it shows where they have come from, from kindergarten, I don't know about preschool, certainly from kindergarten all the way on up to twelfth grade. So you do this multiple times during the year, I do it three times a year. This is a big, big report. And so far, we have received a recognition by the Department of Education, of acknowledgement of excellence for that report. So thank you, Erica and Ms. Suzanne.
Thank you, thank you Suzanne, on our behalf.
Excellent.
Thank you.
A lot of dedication and time. Today, we did not have internet, so they had to work on the report from Starbucks. They just had no choice.
So hard.
You'd be so surprised how much work you got done, though. Like, it makes a difference not being interrupted.
That's all I was, my fifteen phone call the other day.
Yeah, so getting that report done and doing it right, that's the thing, is make sure it's all done right. Because if it has errors, it sends it back and they send you a really nasty letter. Those are really letters you don't want to get from the state because they're really threatening, those are threatening. So you have to make sure that you do that right so the state's not going back about why is this an error, there's an error in this.
And then isn't this the data that they use for portioning that down the line?
All of that. It's been for funding, it's used for, it's used for funding, it's used for everything, you name it. For English language development, tracking the students, especially patient.
You got it right.
Every, every time, no?
The standard has been set.
There is a patient, you name it, everything's in that system, everything. The only thing that's not there yet is DNA, but everything else is there, right? Everything.
We expect...
They're working on that, so. So it's a big, it's a big thing.
Yeah, thank you.
For all the schools. Okay, so any questions about the staffing, seven point three? I'm giving you a staffing update on the position that, that's posted. And I'm also giving you an update on who's currently doing some of the main, performing some of the main duties for this position and what some of those duties are. I missed, let's see, that was starting coming. So the main duties are listed here, but that's not, those are not the only ones.
Is that what, what's a family community release on this hire? That's exactly what they're going to be?
Exactly what they're going to be, a lot of evening events, evening planning, Saturday, attending Saturday Academy, all of that, yeah.
When you plan to fill that one?
As soon as we have, I'm hoping after winter break, as soon as we have applicants or qualified for the position. Right now, the applications have been submitted incomplete, no letters of accommodation, no letter of interest, no resume, pretty much my name and my address and my phone number. And that's how we have received the applications. So we receive, I would say, three or four. Out of those three or four, two were absolutely incomplete, no information, and one had some information, the other one had a little more, but not everything that's required.
Are you going to repost it because of expiration?
We, we can extend the window. All you go, you extend the window. Yeah, so we will have to extend the window to keep it open.
Is it a competitive salary? I'm just trying to compare.
Competitive to what districts offer? No. And the reason being is that districts have a community liaison for the district and they're paying pretty competitive. They're serving fourteen thousand students, some thousand or so families, one per district. We have one for...
You have one for school.
For us. For us. So, it doesn't compare. And the districts are also offering that position full-time, and we're not offering it full-time. So, that makes a difference.
Oh, I see.
It's the full-time, part-time, and then
Well, that's, I'm just trying to get at why we're not getting
And then, the compensation between here and a district is nothing. There's only 14 elementaries, 13 for the bigger districts, and here is just us. So
It's young.
It is young.
I'd recommend that at a certain point, we revisit that, if you're not getting applicants. The way that it's currently being marketed, maybe we need to
Revisit that, of course, yeah, that is something that
Describe or something.
Yeah.
Okay, fireworks and other fundraisers. This information has been requested multiple times, and this has been provided to the OCC on December 2nd. And also, copies of the requested information was provided electronically to those who requested them. So, at this time, I've done our due diligence in providing the breakdown, and I believe there's no additional information needed for that. Is there any questions about fireworks or fundraisers? Because that breakdown was provided to the president of OCC, as well as to the members who attended that evening, parents, so
Questions?
Questions, okay. 7.5 is the same information I shared the other day though. The other company is called InStudio Architecture. So, it's the other, the other architecture company that I contacted. I haven't put back with them yet. And the next one I'll contact is Peter Casaman. Okay, we had an LTA stakeholder input meeting. And I asked, I called CDE, as well as I asked, I said, "How many LTA meetings do I need to have at a minimum?" And they said, "There's no requirement for LTA meetings to be held, but there is a requirement for input from the stakeholders to be held." So, there's a difference. Oasis Community Council is a stakeholder. Usen is a stakeholder. Staff is a stakeholder. Those are the stakeholders. So, what I've done in the past is at the old family meeting, we had the LTA items listed. OCC meetings, at every meeting, there is at least one or two items that's listed, so that we don't go in order with all of the information all at once. So, throughout the year, there is information and presentations, data for students about student achievement, financial information, you name it, that's presented to the staff, Usen Board, and OCC. Those are my stakeholders. I don't need to have specifically LTA meetings, however, in the past, I've had LTA meetings specifically just for LTA. What we call it, a hearing, meaning I'm providing you the plan for the LTA for the next year, for the next few years. And we wait for input from the community. So, we've done that, but it's not required. I verified it already twice, and it has been confirmed that we don't need to have LTA meetings necessarily. But having that, it's a good practice, it's not required, so
So, when you do have, when you do provide information regarding the LTA, is that information held in a folder on the website somewhere? How was that, so those parents that didn't show up and are interested in knowing about the LTA, per se, do we keep that information?
We keep that information, and we could, the last time I sent it, your parents were on the stage, but if I didn't, they don't quote me on that, because it's been a year. So, we do keep it, so we can provide it to the families if they request it. We have it available.
No questions?
No?
No?
No questions, okay.
7.6, thank you. Let's move on to our action items, unfinished business action items. The first one is, we, the UCM bylaws, or bylaws, we have been operating with some very outdated bylaws that were bless the people that did put them together at the beginning, but but it was time to review them and make sure that they're current to what we're doing now. And so, everyone's had an opportunity hopefully to review those, or reset to everyone. Do I have a motion to approve the bylaws that's presented to all of you?
So, we
Okay. Moved in second. All those in favor of approving the bylaws that's presented, may I?
Aye, aye.
Unanimous vote, thank you. The conflict of interest policy. If you remember, we had approved a conflict of interest code. This is another document that coincides with that code, and one that also is part of our bylaws. And so, there's two different, two different things. The code is something that we have to file with the county, right? And the, so the code is like the, the policy itself, and then the, the one that we're going to prove now, the, the policy itself is the procedures of how we carry that out. I got that right, correct? Okay. So, one is establishes your code, the other one establishes the policies and how you carry out and ensure that that code is adhered to. So, did everyone get an opportunity hopefully to review the conflict of interest policy? And if I can get someone to, a motion to approve those as presented? It's a motion by Nora, and a second, seconded by Mike. All those in favor to approve the conflict of interest policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous vote, thank you. 8.3 is, we've looked at, since yours truly is now having to sign, possibly sign some checks down the line, to remove some people from some current accounts that we had. And Juan in particular, as the outgoing president. So, I need, the Rabo Bank requires that we have these motions and that we approve it here at the board in order to move forward with continuing to use our accounts at the bank. So, now you get a motion to approve the removal of Juan Sanchez and Melanie Beckland from our accounts at Rabo Bank. Move, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, unanimously. 8.4, and that is to add this account to the account now, since we just removed the former board president. Can I get a motion to approve that? So, move by Nora, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Pete. All those in favor of approving that motion, say aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, good, thank you. That concludes our action items. We do have a couple of announcements, so I'll pass it on to
So, announcements, again, let's see, the next meeting is on January 30th, 2018.
We need to change the 18 on there.
Starting or closing, opening or closing session at 5:00 PM, and they go into closed session, and at 6:30, they resume. And then, our winter break from December 16th till January 8th. January 8th is it's the work day, work day, and students return to school on Tuesday the 9th of 2018.
Thank you. Any, any other announcements from the board members? No? Okay, well, on behalf of the Usen Board, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight. Wish everyone a beautiful holiday with your family and friends, and the staff, I'm sure, also even tomorrow, to give them the same message. But if I happen to not be there for some reason, please convey my message that we are very, very thankful for everything that they do for the school and for our children. And we wish them a very, very happy holiday with your friends and families and so on. Thank you, and adjournment at the record time of 7:37.